Is each resident family says each seasonal salaries. Does anybody have any questions?
No, it's good news.
Great.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll please all you trustees.
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Yes.
Family says each seasonal salaries. Somebody have any questions?
Hold on, sorry.
No, it's good news.
Great.
Hold on one second, we're having technical problems here.
Good to go. There's an audio issue with loop back.
You okay now?
Yep. All set.
Technical problem has been fixed. Call roll. Cliff was in here on his hands and he needs to fix it. Yes, call roll. Trustees is Winthrop?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next item on the agenda is the abstract of ordered vouchers. Tonight's total is $2,689,882.56. Tidy sum. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I have a couple. If I can get to page seven, if I can get to that.
Page seven?
Page seven.
Okay, what is it?
I don't know yet, I gotta get to page seven.
That's colored sessions.
Yeah, colored sessions. I guess what I'm curious about. Just hold on. It's grand, well, none of these are indicated that these are escrow. So I don't understand what we're doing if they're not escrow.
Incident.
For instance, 207 Grand Street. 43 Palmer.
Dan, it's going directly to the engineering line, which means it's not an escrow account.
Okay, then my question is, what are we doing that we're paying for without an escrow?
Yeah, I'll have to look at that. I didn't look at it. Dan, when you put these in 207, how come we have two addresses? Are these both addresses that they did?
I think, you know, 207, they're no longer at the, at the, at the planning board. So it may have been that they're reviewing some of those already approved. Let me, let me pull up the bill.
You gotta speak louder, Dan, I can't hear you.
I'm, I'm checking right now. So we can get the KBS.
I, I think what we need for the future, Augie, for non-escrow, we need a description of what it is. Augie, you with me?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that? Is that, there's a room enough? I mean, you have a lot of lines here.
Place more of a description on these non-escrow items. Understood.
Okay, I, I think it's important to figure out what we're doing here.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm looking here. Let's see. Think this may have to do with the, the SWIP. That was for the property. I see some emails dating back to March of this year.
Then shouldn't it have been an escrow?
Dan, can you repeat that? I speak closer to the microphone or I'm speaking.
I have to, I think we'd have to follow up with.
Okay, so follow up and get back to us, please.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Dan?
Yes.
Dan Sonoff.
Yes.
That was for the SWIP, shouldn't it have been an escrow?
I don't know, it was, it was on the non-escrow bill, which is why it got charged here. But I can review this with Keller Sessions to make sure it's either charged appropriately or we'll have a correct answer for you.
Okay. Any other questions for the board?
On page 29. Sessions do with the, regarding the police parking lot?
Repaving of the police parking lot?
It doesn't say repaving.
Yeah, so we need drainage work done there. Let me see, let me go to it.
Page 29.
Page 29, Jerry.
Police parking lot site plan. So what we're doing at the police parking lot, which was a list, which was an item left over from the list of the paving, is that we're repairing a drainage issue where it floods out at the basement door of the police parking lot. We also have a wall that's giving way. So this is due to a meeting that I had with Keller Sessions engineer, our consulting engineer, about the site plan and getting a, getting that put together for resurfacing, repair, resurfacing, and rebuilding the wall.
And on page 30 is the Westchester Joint Water Works. Is this for the Shore Acres Drive line that we previously approved?
About the $120,000?
That is correct. Or is this something else?
I will, let me find that for you and I can give you an answer.
What page was that? 28?
Page 30.
30, what line, I'm sorry?
It's the top, it's the second line. Shore Acres for replacement water main.
It's charters for various capital projects.
Okay, okay.
No, it's, that's the, yes, that would be the Shore Acres project.
It's for Shore Acres Water Main.
Yes.
Right.
But is it, my question is, was this the one on Shore Acres Drive or something else?
A, wait. 1361.
The only water main they replaced was at Shore Acres Drive.
Well, that's what I'm trying to verify.
Okay, it's the only water main they replaced.
Yeah, it was approved by the board last October. I hear 75 feet of transact water main on Shore Acres Drive. Yep. So it was for the, the transact water main on Shore Acres Drive.
Okay, so. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board?
I have two questions. Regarding Keller Sessions, are we gonna pay it or wait till we know? And on page two, is CoreLogic, I guess, is that another way of just refunding real estate? So sure is what, I mean.
These are overpayments from the, from CoreLogic, the, the escrow. You know, I was asking Augie about this on, on Friday so we could help me understand. Basically, I guess, they make estimates of what is gonna be due and they pay based on their estimate. And when the actual tax bill comes in lower, we have to refund the individual properties. Is that accurate paraphrasing of what you told me on Friday?
That's, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a question comment on, on the Keller Sessions. So what the decision is to hold? Because I do, I do have kind of the same concern that it is not entirely clear. I try to, to figure this out sometimes. And had a quick look at the bills, sometimes they do, they, they just tell you the name of the project, time, the rate, but they don't tell you what they're doing, which I think is central for any consultant. Sometimes they do break it down, but, but it's not consistent. So, so, so it's very hard, it, it's really, it's really hard. One, one good thing, and I know we're just making steps to get it getting better, one thing is that it's broken down, because then that's gonna facilitate, I think, the main discussion, which is, should it be escrow, should it not be escrow? How much is the cost versus the general fees that we charge? To figure out if in the future, some of this, some of this charges should be singled out. For example, the, the stormwater, you know, the stormwater plans, I think if they go to the planning board, yes, they should be escrowed. If not, it kind of, it all depends. We need to, we need to identify the project and what, how much it's really costing us. So, so this is, this is a good, good thing, a very, really, really good thing. But I, 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 what I, I'm not, I'm not clear if we have then the identification of, of, what is being charged to us and, and the, the actual activity. So, so I think we're very close, but, but still, I, I, I can't, I can't, you know, get, get this breakdown, and I don't think maybe it's clear from staff, so I. Maybe pull it out and have it all cleared and then, then we kind of know how to pass this ones. I know it'll hold them, but I, but I just wanna hear all your thoughts.
Yeah, we, for 453 Palmer Avenue, that was a. I think that was a Skulman product application with a SWIP. There was not, when, so I think that is not a, a board, I'm sorry, a planning board item. I'm just quickly reviewing the memo here. Yeah, it said, proposing construction we both reference application. The applicant's opposing construction of two bluestone patios, multiple walkways and a retaining well. Opposer replaced the existing concrete walkway with gravel. So that, that was 453 Palmer Avenue. So that was, that would not be a, a planning board level item.
All right, you know what, Dan? Instead of going through every one of these items and come down what is and what isn't, just, because I, I think the sense of folks is that they wanna hold this off until August.
Okay.
You know, so if, if you have information between now and the August meeting, please we give it to the board of trustees. And if the board of trustees has any more questions about bills before, you know, try and get them to the staff beforehand, so we can get this stuff cleared up and not cleared up at the meeting. So does everybody wanna make a motion? If you, if you're not, if you don't have your questions, we should entertain a motion of removing the Keller Session bills of $10,990.25.
Don't move.
Second.
Augie call. The new, the new total, $2,678,888.31.
Before we vote, I, I have, I have another comment. It relates to the, relates to page 28. Flagler Drive, 294. I've looked at the, I've looked at that bill and all they were, was just joint waterwork bills. And my suggestion is that, that now you ask them to prob, give us, give us really the percentage that we're paying every time for the project, because I thought we had already done the final payment a while back, and it keeps adding and adding, and it just tells you, it just describes more, it just tells you, the invoice just tells you if there's, if it's labor or if it's, or if it's materials. In this case, it is. Trying to figure it out. Seems to be. Sorry, it's, it's not even clear. My, my, my point is, is, is very hard, I've been, and as you know, I've, I've been trying to track down how the projects are being paid, and, 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 and the point, my concern is that they only give you the, the total amount that we approve early on. For example, in this case, it was 3.3 million that we approved, and it was under, you know, certain special circumstances. Then when it was bid, it came down significantly, but we don't know really what is the total amount of the cost. For example, at this rate, I don't know where we are. Is this the final payment or not? So, so I think something has, has to be, has to be improved as to how Joint Water Works submits these bills. I, I, I don't wanna object to the level of, of stopping this or the other bills, but if I, for the last, last three times that I, that we've received bills, I've been comparing them, and, and, and it doesn't, it, it just, it, there's no clarity as to what is, what is, what is the total amount? Where are we in the project? So I, I think that is, that is central, or, and even, and even some of the description, because we're just, we're just paying towards a total approval that we did at the beginning, but, but we don't know really where we are in the project. So I think since the mayor is, is on the board, maybe we can figure something out into the future, to the future.
Certainly, and, and as I've said before, if, you know, you, you, people come to me with questions, I'd be happy to get answers. I could have had an answer for you tonight.
Well, that's why I said I don't have this, we got this over the weekend. I saw, I, I just saw this, I asked, asked for the invoices today, I've been busy. So that's why I raised it today, because I don't think there's an objection of how, how paid, but it really needs to, we need to improve that. So, so, so let's take it from, from now, Mayor, please.
As I said, Augie call the roll. Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next item on the agenda, resolution authorizing IMA with Westchester County for fire apparatus radios. Jerry, you wanna talk about this for a second?
Mayor, I wish we could. I, I know Dan set this up, but this was something that came through while I was out. And I think it's the replacement of the radios in the vehicles, in the apparatus itself, in the actual trucks and SUVs, which the county will take up or pay for with no expense to us.
Sounds like a bargain. Anybody have any questions?
I think the comment is, they have, they have like their own, so we, we three levels of radio, I got three. Some of, this is that kind of the third one, which is the, and, and so this is, this'll take care of that one level. We still have to, they still have to make some improvements in the other two, but, but it's good that at least level three is done. That was discussed at the fire council.
Good, good, good. Okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. And next is a resolution authorizing to execute IMA with Westchester County for solid waste and recycle, recyclables for disposal. This is pretty much the standard agreement that we approve every year.
A long time then.
Yeah, this is the.
Concerns?
What I find interesting is you're penalized if you exceed the amount you're recycling. I, I find that ludicrous and backwards.
Yeah, the mark. The penalty is if more than 10% of what you submit for recycling is not recyclables, the county will charge us the full freight for solid waste to that total.
But I don't want trash in recycling material.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it's, it's just if you, if you're putting cinder blocks in your recycling material.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is happy.
Yeah, they wanna contain that. They basically want us to monitor it.
Are we monitoring and are we exceeding it, or are we?
I don't, I don't recall that in time that I've been here, that I've been notified that we exceeded it, so I think we're doing, plus, we, we separate, recycling is only happening one day, so it's being done by hand, and I'm sure that if there's material that shouldn't be in there, it gets rejected and left behind, which of course the homeowner can put in the trash the next day.
And, and all the recyclables are loose, so once they dump it into the, into the hopper, they'll see what's in there.
Correct.
Okay, any motion?
So moved. Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, that takes care of the AP and the small items. Does anybody wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
Um, yeah, are we gonna go in for the two items? Do we have to amend what's on the agenda?
If you make the motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session. Advice of counsel for the litigation Goldstein versus Village of Amerinick under 1051D. And also a, a, a letter from Kathy Zabel under 1051F. The employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Can, can you help me understand how Kathy's letter?
Falls under that.
Falls under that?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, I think because it's about something that the Ethics Board did. So it's, she's asked us to review something that the Ethics Board did.
But that's not the employment and history of a particular person.
Well, it's, we, that's the loose, if, I think if we're, we could, I mean, we have not discussed this for a full month. We've had the letter for a full month, and I think that we need to discuss it. It's not on the work session now, but I think there's a question about whether the Ethics Board did something that shouldn't have been done, and that's what she's asked us to, to this floor. So I guess it's up to Bob. Does he think it's, it's under, is it something that we discuss in an open session, at which point we'll put it on the agenda in two weeks? Or is it something for executive session? I think that's up to the attorney.
I mean, I'm, I'm certainly open to an argument that it is an executive session, but I don't see it at this point. It deals with a moment matter that's, that it's, that's publicly out there. I mean, the board doesn't have authority to remove members of the Ethics Board or take some action against members of the Ethics Board. So I'm not sure what she's asking the board to do.
Well, it's pretty clear in the letter. So, I mean, the question is, do we discuss it in an open session in two weeks, or do we discuss it in the executive session? When we, about a month ago, when it came up, we just decided not to do it in an executive session that day that we would postpone it, so that's why I recommended it this way. I don't have a preference, I just think we need to get it on an agenda and discuss it.
I'm looking at the letter now. She's asking that the Board of Ethics, or that the record of the mayor's hearing regarding Ms. Goldstein be corrected. And then she raises the indemnification claim. I mean, it's really about the, the.
Of the recorded hearing.
Yeah, it's about what happened at the hearing. I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, or I'm open to it.
I don't, I, I agree, I don't know, I don't know in what venue is the appropriate venue to discuss it. It's not about what happened at the hearing, it's about the letter that the Board of Ethics wrote describing her, describing her actions.
Which is part of the hearing record.
Part of the hearing record, right. But I think she, her, she is, her question was about the June 10th letter from the Ethics Board. I think, I mean, I think that's what she's asking.
I mean, I, I, the default is you don't do it in executive session. I, I'm, I'm not seeing an argument that should be done in executive session.
So, and we put it on the.
The argument, is the argument that it's, it regards the employment qualification, et cetera, of the members of the Ethics Board?
I mean, the argument is that we, a, a month ago, we were, we didn't do it in executive session because the session was too full, and so no one raised that at that point. If it's something that we should do in an open session, let's do it in an open session in two weeks.
I mean, I, like I said, as I said, I'm open to an argument, but I don't see it at this point. I could be convinced, but I don't see it at this point as an executive.
I mean, and we should have addressed it a month ago, when, you know, the, the first time, we should have addressed it a month ago. So we haven't addressed it. No one raised that argument when I asked it to be put in executive session. So I, I don't have a preference. I think we just need to make a decision about whether we do it now or whether we do it in two weeks.
Um, I, I think that we have discussed the question of indemnification raised in the letter twice in executive session. So I, but this other issue about the record itself, we haven't, and I don't think it's, I mean, I, I'm like Bob, I'm happy to try to understand why it should be discussed in executive session, and, but I certainly don't mind putting it on the agenda for the next work session.
So let's put it on the agenda for the next work session.
I, I personally don't see how to discuss it with board trustees, since it's, you know, the, 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 the record is the record of the mayor's here. But I'm willing to talk about the next work session. So is somebody gonna second Nora's motion to go in?
Well, I'm gonna withdraw the motion, and let's just do it at the work session in two weeks.
Okay, do you still want to do Goldstein versus Amerinick?
Yes.
Please make that motion. They just start all over, so it's.
I'm gonna start, starting all over again. It's a do-over. I'm making a motion to go under, to go into executive session under 1051D of the Open Meetings Law for litigation of Goldstein versus the Village of Amerinick.
Second.
Augie call roll. Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. But I'll see you in executive session. I'm just gonna take a quick break, I'll be right back.
I'm just going to take a quick break and I'll be right back.
It looks like it looks like she's about seven.
Yeah, that's that's actually very expensive. It's an Apple.
It's her first laptop. It's a Star laptop.
An expensive laptop. I don't know which model it is. It's an Apple Mac. It's probably what she has.
You ready for Kelly? Come back. Kelly on?
I'm back.
She's there.
Oh, hi. So whole gang here?
Whole gang.
Uh, we've just come out of executive session where we took no vote. Uh, we discussed Goldstein litigation. I did the motion to enter the, uh, to exit the AP Minor items meeting of, uh, July 27.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, sorry. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. Uh, please go roll. Trustee is in the room?
Yes.
Magic?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Ma'am Murphy?
All right. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.
Thank you.